Call this meeting to order Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, seven P M. City of Somerton, regular council meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
We have the highest honor and dignity of America, and we are the people for which we stand, on the nation, under God.
Rock call.
Mayor Jared Donahue.
Present.
Vice Mayor Conquista.
Present.
Councilmember Martha Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Miguel Villalpando.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Gonzalez. Councilmember Juizca Lino. Councilmember Jesus Rodan. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wishing to address council?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here today to, you know, I wanted to thank.
Yes, sir, can you please state your name?
Martin Portas, or fifty-seven East, the Fifty Street in Somerton. Mayor, like I was saying, I'm here today to thank Councilwoman Garcia for all her help that she got from the rest of the council and the staff members for all the work that they have done with the COVID vaccines. She took, as soon as I called her that day, when I was informed that we were getting vaccines, she immediately said yes, that she would take that on, and I'm glad you did. You did an excellent job, so I just wanted to come and say thanks for what you have done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We've thanked you in another meeting, but yeah, it was a great effort, and that showed the number that had been vaccinated here in the city. And also, thank you, my Dean Supervisor Portas, he was instrumental in getting the vaccines here to Somerton and South County in general. We have the majority of the population that is eligible to be vaccinated are. That's a great testimony. Anybody else from the public wishing to address council? There's none, and there's no item in consent agenda. We're gonna move on to presentations. Item number one, oath and swearing in ceremony for Officer Danny Mena, Officer Jesus Solis, and Officer Robert Omsa. It will be officiated by Honorable Judge Manuel Figueroa.
He doesn't want to stand by the pew. I guess he's sorry about that.
Just go ahead. If I didn't have the officers stand, they're facing this way, so that would... Do you have family members or friends?
Yes, definitely.
They come in?
Yes.
Yeah, they can come in, lots of times they can take pictures. Come in. You can have a seat a little bit.
Well, it's always a nice and special occasion when I have the opportunity and the honor to be able to swear in our police officers, newly retained and hired police officers for the city of Somerton. The information that I received is coming that you guys are brand new, newer officers, so you're training, and that's fine, we like to kind of move you guys into what we expect out of you here in the city of Somerton. You have an excellent police chief, very communicative, and she'll tell you that my office is open to you guys, and you have not specific questions on cases, obviously, but just general questions and procedure, et cetera. I'll make myself available to other police departments in terms of that kind of information. So, it's an honor, and I actually have the opportunity, given to me by the chief, to be able to swear. You guys did. I like to emphasize every time that I do this that it sounds like it's just a ceremonial situation, but it's actually mandated by the state of Arizona that the officers take a oath, and why not do it in front of the public, in front of family members? So, without any further ado, what I want you to do is go ahead and put your certificates here, and down that way. And before we get with the swearing in ceremony, I want you to identify yourselves to the public and to the city council. Beginning with me.
Officer Matt Danny Mena, Somerton Police Department.
Officer Jesus Solis, Somerton Police Department.
Officer Albert Bombo, Somerton Police Department.
Thank you. Now, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Robert Bombo.
Danny Mena.
Usally swear.
Usally swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
The Constitution and the laws of Arizona.
And I will veritise faith and allegiance to the same.
Veritise faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And then I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Somerton Police Officers.
Somerton Police Officers.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So, it's one of these cases, um, occasions to sign your certificate. We'll begin with. That's me and Trina. We're doing interviews, and letting you take pictures. Please go on. And now I'll have the chief present from each one of the under visiting your certificate. Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr.
I want to welcome the new police officers, and congratulations. If the family wants to come take pictures, I'll move out of the way.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number two, presentation by Arizona at Work relating to the expansion of resources to the city of Somerton and South County.
Mayor and council, we have Patrick Getz and Nidia Herrera here from Arizona at Work. They're actually virtually, I don't know if they can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Can you hear us?
Okay. So, the presentation is all yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor of Somerton and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present to you on behalf of Arizona at Work. And we're excited to announce that we have expanded our services in Somerton and also in San Luis, but we're actually excited to that we were able to open a office in Somerton to provide our services for adult and youth and provide the opportunity for employers and businesses to provide the services as well for anything that they might need. I'm trying to look at your back screen, so just to give you a little bit of history of our workforce development. In nineteen seventy-three, we have been known as CETA, and that's the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. In nineteen eighty-three, the act changed to Job Training Partnership Act, which was JTPA. In nineteen ninety-eight, it was changed again to Workforce Investment Act. And currently now, in two thousand fourteen, we're named Arizona Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. So, this is just a little bit of history of where our workforce services come from. A little bit of the background of WIA. President Obama signed WIA into law on July twenty-second in two thousand fourteen. Congress passed it with a wide bipartisan majority, and that was to provide and affirm our roles of the one-stop system, and it promotes coordination and alignment with employment, education, and training programs. And that builds on proven practices such as sector strategies, career pathways, and regional economic approaches. Next, please. Just to give you a little bit of why we're called Arizona at Work, yes, formerly known as Y-PIC. In nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand sixteen, the community has known us as Y-PIC or JTPA. As I mentioned, in two thousand sixteen, there was an unveiling by the state of Arizona that revealed a new system branding name, which is Arizona at Work, Yuma County. So, throughout Arizona, you would find Arizona at Work with the actual location of that area. So, we're here with Yuma County. In the other areas of Arizona, you would find City of Yuma, Maricopa County, and so on. WIA brings together all partners and clients and businesses as a central, centric model, which is a no door wrong approach. And again, as I mentioned, why no longer advertising as Y-PIC? Because they want, the state of Arizona wanted to know that if you were moving to another location around Arizona, you would be able to locate the Arizona at Work within that area or that county. And there is a video attached to what we presented, but with the time, you guys can probably log into that email address to find out a little bit of history of Y-PIC. And we just want to make sure that you are aware that we have priority service for our veterans. Also, just to let you know how we function here in Yuma County is we have to work and partner with our local legislative officials, Yuma County Board of Supervisors. So, in partnership with the two agencies, we have to work on having assured agreements, bylaws, a local plan, conflict of interest, and we constantly meet with the Yuma County Administrator, Mrs. Storp, on a monthly basis to ensure that we are meeting the requirements of the state in the partnership within the two entities. Next, please. We have a local board that's comprised of nineteen members. We have our chairperson. You may know her, Maria Chavoya, she is our board chair. The membership consists of nineteen members. Fifty-one percent of our members have to be in the business representing the majority of that membership. We have twenty percent that represents the workforce representative, and then we have the other category that will comprise of the additional membership from our board. Our South County current participation, when we researched and looked at the need to bring in services for San Luis and South County, we currently ran our database to find out, how many participants do we have in those areas? And when we looked at our information and our data, we were actually already serving a hundred and two individuals in the Somerton area, and in the San Luis, it was about ninety-seven. So, we know that we needed to bring back our services. Actually, we have not been in Somerton for a while. It's been about more than ten years prior to that we were present in Somerton. Due to funding cuts and additional factors, we at that time closed our services within Somerton. I wanted to share a little bit of information of our training programs that we offer in Yuma County, and this is through our Department of Economic Training Provider List. As you can see, we have the Law and Form Training Academy. We call the LIDA, it's a part-time and full-time committee health worker. We have the various Microsoft Office, the Medical Assistance Certificate, Electrical Apprenticeship, Google I T Support, the Certified Nursing Assistant, CDL, which is a Commercial Jarvis License and Medical Office Specialist. As you can see with our logos, we do partnerships with Arizona Western College, the Yuma Truck Driving School, and Regional Center for Border Health. It's exciting to know that you just swore in three individuals that did participate through our program, through the Law Enforcement Academy, so we are excited that you guys were able to, we were able to provide those services to these individuals and additional individuals that went through the LIDA program and now are employed through the Somerton Police Department. Next. Other program services available that we will be offering is on-the-job training. We call them OGTs, internships, work experience, GED, and English Language Learners Services, job search, and workshops. These are the services that we want to bring to the Somerton community as part of our Somerton Resource Center. I wanted to provide just a slide of our Law Enforcement Training Academy. We have been working with AWC, Mr. Alfonso, to provide these law enforcement agencies to Yuma Police Department, Yuma County Sheriff's Department, Somerton, San Luis, Cocopa, Pashon, Wellington, and the Arizona Police Department. That was some slides we wanted to share on them going through their academy. The next slide will show the graduation that just recently happened in, I want to say, April. These are your graduating examples of success stories of services that we have brought to Somerton that you guys have officially are now employed through the city of Somerton. These are additional access points that we have throughout Yuma County, the Mesa Heights Community Center, the O.C. Johnson's Elementary School, adult probation, and the Yuma County Library. Right now, those were postponed due to the pandemic, but we are constantly reaching out to, once we find out that we are able to resume services, we will be out at those meetings. I'm gonna pass it over to my colleague, Patrick Getz. He is the Operations Director for Arizona Network, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that. I'm the Executive Director for Arizona Network. Patrick?
Thank you, Nidia, and Mayor of Somerton and members of the city council. I would also like to thank you for allowing us to be put on the agenda and allowing us to let you and be aware of the services that Arizona Network will be providing to the citizens of Somerton. On the first slide, you can see, I'm gonna kind of give you a picture tour of the center. But the Somerton Resource Center is located at two oh one North Bingham Avenue. It's suite number six. It's about a thousand square feet. It's a little smaller than our main career center, but we'll be able to provide all the services that we do provide down in Yuma County. That, we opened that up on April twelfth, so it's only been open for about three weeks, and later in the slides, I'll kind of give you an idea of how many people have been using that. Next slide, please. And this is inside the Somerton Resource Center. We do have full-time staff down there, and what we asked our providers is that we don't switch the staff that are working in Somerton. So, if somebody comes in on a Monday and talks to a case manager, comes back on Thursday or Friday, he's talking to the same person, and we want to build that relationship with the community, so they are working with those people. We do have an employer engagement coordinator. Her name is Mariana Martinez, and she's actually born and raised in Somerton, so she's really excited about working out there. We have a talent development specialist, a yeast specialist, and we also have a resource clerk. On the second slide that you see on the right, there's a kiosk, and we have two computers that are available for the public, and that resource clerk is there to assist them if they're looking for employment or anything else that they need through the Arizona Job Connection. Next slide, please. And that slide is still inside the building, and what we have is a, on the first slide, on the upper left, is the reception area, and that's where the resource clerk is, and they're able to come in and wait. Most of the participants that'll be coming into Somerton, if they're not just walking in, they'll most likely have an appointment with some of our staff. The next one top on the right is we have three office spaces there, and that's where the two case managers and the employment coordinator are located at. On the bottom left-hand left is we have two hotel stations. That's the new buzzword for empty office, but what we have in there is for our partners that want to come up and provide services to the residents of Somerton, meaning like something like vocational rehab, maybe a DES rep, our migrant seasonal farm worker team, and also our vet reps. So, they can make appointments, and they can meet with them in there, they have full access to computers, and that allows people from Somerton avoiding having to drive to Yuma for services. On the bottom right, there's a conference room, we have a small conference room, and actually, that's been reconfigured since these pictures were taken, and we are able to do testing for our youth in there, testing for adults. All services that are provided in Yuma can be provided in the Somerton site, whether it be in-person or be virtual. Next slide, please. Since we're talking about South County, I want to talk about the San Luis access point. And when I show you some of the numbers that we've had up there, the Somerton site is going to be a big welcome for Arizona Work, because we'll be able to relieve some of the pressure that we're having up in the San Luis site. So, in that slide there, this is just recent, this is like only a month ago, and when the unemployment insurance came out, and then they had to prove who they were because there's so much fraud, it was called IDMe, we literally had hundreds of people, and most of the time, we only have one staff member up there, and sometimes we have two, and we're closed on Friday. So, that's up in our Somerton site, and that's about a seven-hundred-square-foot office. They were coming in one at a time. Show the next slide, please. Is that the one with, let's see? I can't see, okay, there you go. Okay, so, I was not able to get the slide in because we just got the numbers in for April, but what you can see is we have not put the Somerton site in there yet. So, we have our main career center at the top, our Martin Luther King Youth Services, employment service in Yuma, and then the South County, the Small Business Resource Center, and then we have what we call virtual contacts, because during the pandemic, as we went into virtual mode, in a lot of cases, we never did close down, but people were able to access us to make appointments and schedule themselves for workshops, and we usually run about two to three hundred on that. So, if you look at the South County, South Small Business Resource Center, second from the bottom, last month, or in March, we saw four hundred and eighty-four, four hundred and ninety-four people. Okay, so, when the IDMe started, for the month of April, just the month of April, was one thousand three hundred and forty-one in the San Luis office. So, now that we've opened the Somerton office, just in the first two or three weeks, we've already seen over two hundred people from the city of Somerton coming in, accessing services from Arizona Work. Next slide, please. Okay, on this one, I just wanted to show you the magnitude of the amount of people that DES and Arizona Work is dealing with. That picture there is a little bit after the pandemic started, and it's in San Luis. So, the picture there is from the bank, looking towards the DES Arizona Work office. So, that day, we went up there with flyers with jobs that we had available, but there was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about five hundred people waiting to access the unemployment insurance. So, there was no social distancing, there wasn't, you know, any precautions being taken out there other than when they basically got up to the DES building, and then the security guards were able to separate them a little bit. Next slide, please. And on this one, there's a couple pictures in there, and the top left is when we first got out there with our DES partners and PEP, and it was just basically a bunch of people really close together, sitting together, and it really wasn't very organized. The picture to the right on the top is our Arizona Work staff and DES partners, and we also had PEP partners, and unemployment insurance has given them a class on how to process UI claims there in South County. So, basically, we had like three echelons of how we could serve that customer at the time. One, they could walk in and talk to a representative face-to-face. Two, they could come in and use a kiosk if they knew how to access unemployment insurance. And the third one is where we deployed staff from here in Yuma up into San Luis, and we actually, at that time, was able to put the input in for unemployment insurance by talking to them. And right now, we can't, we're not allowed to do that anymore, but we are allowed to assist them in the unemployment insurance. And just to note, you know, yesterday, the governor signed an executive order mandating that people that are on unemployment insurance now do have to actively look for work. And this has been a situation in basically all over the state is where folks have not been looking for work, and we've been working with employers that are really having a hard time keeping up with, like in the manufacturing, where they can keep their lines open and their production lines. So, hopefully, that's gonna help. And I think as word gets out in the Somerton site, it will get a lot busier. And like we said, we're very, very excited about being in Somerton. And with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I will ask if there's any questions for Nidia.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, presentation by a kiosk regarding possible bill payment terminal outside of City Hall. All Kiosk Regarding Possible Bill Payment Terminal Outside City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear us? Can you hear us okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing us to present to you tonight. With me at All Kiosk is George Graves. He's the founder and Chief Technology Officer, and also Sang Lu, who is the Director of Programming and IT. Uh, I wanna thank your staff for working with us diligently to get us to this point, and we're looking forward to working with Somerton as we go. If you look at our presentation, um, I'm not sure if that's our presentation up behind you or not. But if you look at the second. Okay.
We're on the, we're on the product preview.
Okay, so you're ha- you have the uh the mock-up that we did um for Somerton to show you what the actual kiosk would look like there. Uh, what we do is provide a turnkey solution for kiosk payments for your um citizens. Uh, we take care of everything, including the installation of the kiosk. Um, everything's P C I compliant. Uh, we manage the cash collection. Uh, we do, we take care of the consumable replacements like printer paper and so forth. Um, we provide custom reports for daily reconciliation and multi-channel support if there's uh a breakdown in the equipment. If you look at the next slide, our solution um really is is to bring you a A D A compliant um kiosk with an industrial-grade touchscreen as well as a uh card reader, a cash safe that is U L two ninety-one certified. And the unit also comes with a self-contained air conditioning to keep the equipment, uh electrical equipment, nice and cool during the summer. The next slide really just shows you how we integrate with with the city of Somerton um through the internet and then uh through our back office, and then your back office and reconciliations, and then to direct deposits into your uh bank accounts. Next slide is the um how we process, it shows you how easily we process transactions. So we have, we provide a twenty-four-seven service, real-time posting, so next day um uh to your bank, so you'll, your clients or your your citizens would be real-time um updates on their account. So if they paid today, it would show up as they paid today. The next slide shows the um entities that we've worked with, both with S R P. We currently have uh kiosks with S R P, Mesa, uh in Glendale here in in Arizona, and then some corporations um that you see there at the bottom. The next slide you see is our current Arizona Municipal Partners. Uh, again, Glendale has a um kiosk at their City Plaza, as well as Mesa has uh three kiosks, uh two at their City Plaza and one at their Multi-Generational Center. Um, we're doing uh, we have the single unit at Glendale again, and the three deployed in Mesa combined. There are over four thousand uh or forty-six hundred citizens that are using those kiosks currently. The next slide shows you where our S R P uh kiosks are deployed. And then finally, um we give you the contact information to get in touch with me. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, Mayor and Council. Um, but with that, that's the end of our presentation. We tried to keep it short and sweet, so we don't keep you there all night.
Thank you. Any questions?
Does it um, does it contain multiple languages, Spanish option?
Yes.
And also the site miss that you see right here, um is, was there a uh is a thought of moving it inside due to questions that, you know, people may have, and, you know, come get the girls, or that side?
Well, we thought it would be a good um uh a good, a good option for when City Hall would be closed. So that way, if if we're not open, customers can still come in and make payments here at City Hall. However, it's very um user-friendly. It's touchscreen. Um, so we we anticipate that they, that our, that our customers wouldn't have a, an issue operating them. Would you like to uh add to that, Kevin?
Yeah, it's it's really easy to do, to use. Uh, we find that even the elderly um folks in Mesa actually can utilize it pretty easily, as well as uh there's some parents that will send their um little kids up to actually pay the utility bills as well. So we've we've seen the gamut from from very young to um to retired individuals that are that are paying the, using the kiosk and haven't had any issues. And and Council Mayor, that, Mayor and Councilmember to answer your question, we do uh provide in both English and Spanish.
Ma- Mayor, Mayor Council, uh the idea is to to make sure that we have some sort of service, some sort of level of service uh twenty-four-seven. Um, maybe starting here at City Hall, and at one point, probably move on to maybe uh one of the uh Turbo K, um, the solar market or Family Dollar, somewhere in the area where people are are more prone to be uh shopping. And so that that's the whole idea. See how this works um and and move from there. Kevin, is there a minimum amount that this will cost the city or the um the resident in order to pay for itself or anything that like that nature? How many, how many transactions would it, would it take?
Mayor, Council, um, we're we're looking at at least around five hundred transactions for it to pay for itself.
Per per month or for you?
Per month.
Do we have as many residents coming to those transactions a month?
Yes. We would also, we would also be able to um put a a barcode in, a barcode reader that would allow for them to just scan their bills and pull up all the information. So um we're looking at all those options, and we we do have that ability to to be able to just make it a barcode reader, and they wouldn't really have to enter any uh information outside of their payment.
Ki- Kevin, uh one question. Is there um, is there possibility to add maybe, i- and obviously, this is just a conversation at this point, but uh to add um maybe parks and recreational fees?
Mayor, Council, yes. Um, it's it's really a end-user defined. So whatever you want to add to it, you can add uh payment of permit fees, you can add payment of of park and rec fees. Um, if you wanna move it into your court system, we can also do court collections, uh library fines. Uh, it's really end-user defined, so whatever you want to collect, we can help you there.
Oh, okay. Even business license, I'm assuming, right? Is that correct? Business licenses, whatever we, yep.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Yes, I believe we would be able to. Business licenses, is it?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, business licenses, yes.
Thank you.
And I I'd just like to add that this has been part of my vision for the finance, for the Finance Department has been to have some type of automation for those cash payments or for um when City Hall is not open to the public. So this is a really great opportunity, and I hope you'll contribute.
It's in the year of the.
Yes. Oh, both, yes, 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 both.
Hopefully, the cooling works, because it's gonna be indirect to the sun, so we're gonna find out here in the next couple of months.
I hope so. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, this is George Graves, the Technical Officer at uh All Kiosk. And the unit has a uh cooler uh attached to it. So it uh it keeps the internal equipment uh in operating temperature range at all times.
Yeah, we're gonna test it this summer.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Item number four, presentation update regarding utility account shut-off that took place April twenty-seventh to the thirtieth.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Serena Gallego, Finance Director. Um, I just have a very short briefing regarding our shut-off um last week. Uh, there were initially fifty-one payment plans that we had set up for um our customers. The initial shut-off list consisted of a hundred and twenty customers, and the total amount was uh thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three thousand, ninety-eight as of April twenty-sixth. Um, I do have to report uh five customers were had established payment plans but didn't um honor them, and two customers had established payment plans but were shut off. So those customers, uh their fees were waived because they had established payment uh uh plans. It was an internal error, and uh we were able to catch those. So um for uh on the twenty-seventh, we established our lock list. So customers that haven't gone in and paid their entire um, their their half of their balance, they'll um, they they'll be locked, and our um our utilities um, our utility staff goes out and locks their their meters, and um once they pay, then we go back and we unlock them and reestablish services. Now, if they don't, we send them over to Community Development so that um code enforcement can go take a look at those properties and speak to the residents. But as of now, we have actually, the numbers have shifted a little bit, because this was as of last Wednesday or Thursday. So as of now, we have um actually seventy-one people on payment plans and um let's see, thirty on the lock list, um two of them established payment plans, and one of them paid off their full account. So it was a bit hectic going into shut-off the first first month after over a year, but I think we were able to to coordinate and get it done. We were able to provide good customer service to our customers. I didn't hear too many complaints. So um I think overall, we're, it went well. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Question with, uh, did you mention those people that have locked on them, um, do they have to pay half of their in order to remove the lock?
Yes. Half of their past due balance, and then the other half, they establish a payment plan if they can't pay, if they can't make the payment.
And are we offering um, you know, the resources, like go, we can go to WACO, you can buy for our, if we just have funding?
Yes, that's correct. We are offering those. In fact, we received a check from Yuma County for one of the um, I think two, two checks from Yuma County for the um uh for their grant program for utilities and rent, et cetera. And we have uh received, I think, two or three customers for WACO. So we are receiving those, and we are sending our customers who inquire about that, and even if they don't, we went through and called um every customer on the list the prior week, make sure that they were aware, and make sure that um they had sufficient time to call those um those other entities.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Go to new business. Item number one, discussion of possible action to approve appointment of Sonia Moreno Quiza as Commissioner to the Somerton Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This is Lisa, Park Recreation Director. I'm here before you review the the possibility of appointing um Miss Sonia Moreno Quiza. She's been a medicator for the city of Somerton for the past fifteen years. She's a resident of Somerton, and she has the desire to get involved and help um to promote volunteerism at their school and likes to be involved with her community. And um she is a very good candidate for our Park Recreation Commission, who currently holds four members, and we are seeking an additional three. This one, uh, has a match with Sonia. She has, she works, she addressed to the City Council.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Um, my name is Maria Sonia Moreno Quiza. I am a Somerton resident. I live in ten North Andrea Avenue. Um, and I'm interested in becoming um a member of the Committee for the Park and Re- Recreation in Somerton.
Thank you. Some comments?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Sonia Moreno Quiza as Commissioner for the Somerton Parks and Recreation Commission.
Motion by Vice Mayor Castillo.
Second by Councilmember Garcia. I was in favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Thank you, and welcome, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Turn number two, discussion of possible action to approve application of extension of services, patio permit to Arizona Department of Liquor Control on behalf of A five three five zero.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brisa Garcia, Special Living Coordinator. Eight-five-three-five-zero Bar and Grill would like to sell alcohol off premises on May twenty-first during the eight-five-three-five-zero art show display event from six P M. to twelve A M. Artists from Yuma County are coming together to have an art display. The objective of this event is to promote and support art culture and local talent.
Questions? Wanna put brief on the, the spot?
Any questions? Any questions?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve application for extension of services, patio permit to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control to authorize A five-three-five-zero Bar and Grill to sell alcohol on May twenty-first.
Motion by Vice Mayor Castillo.
Garcia, I was in favor.
Aye. You're opposed. Motion.
Item number three, discussion of possible action to approve a special events liquor license application for both the July celebration on behalf of Somerton Parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Brisa Garcia, Special Living Coordinator. Park and Recreation Commission would like to sell liquor on the Onar Fourth of July celebration that will take place on Sunday, July fourth, from seven P M. to twelve A M. at Council Park.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve special events liquor license application for the Fourth of July celebration on behalf of the Somerton Parks and Recreation Commission.
First, a motion by Vice Mayor E. U.
Second by Councilwoman Garcia. I was in favor. Aye.
You're opposed.
Thank you. And also, now that I'm um right here in front of you, I wanted to invite you all um for our vaccine, Cinco de Mayo Block Party that will take place this Friday here on St. Pete. Uh, we will be having our local businesses giving out samples, and we are hopeful that people from Yuma County will come in and and meet our business owners and provide all the goodies they have to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanna ask one? We have a liquor license. We could put him in the center of the general. If there's a question, that's one we can take it off. Just a routine. Kind of that we could, situation. Item number four, discussion of possible action to approve A P S utility easement in the southeast corner of Canal Street and Council Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. Um, Arizona Public Service, uh A P S, is requesting an easement on city property on the south, southeast corner of uh Canal Street and Council Avenue. Uh, as you may know, we're currently working on the uh redevelopment this part of town, uh part of the city, yes, it's the project. Uh, adding uh basically new newer streets, course gather, A D A compliant uh ramps, um sidewalks. Basically, A P S is uh willing, uh willing to install a new light pole on the request corner. Uh, our suggestion action is to uh approve the utility easement uh to A P S in the southwest corner of Council Avenue and Canal Street, and designate city manager to execute both forms.
Any questions?
Any questions, Tom?
There are motion?
Motion by Councilwoman Garcia.
Aye.
Second by Vice Mayor Castillo. I was in favor. Aye. You're opposed.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to install new streetlights. Item number five, discussion of possible action to install new streetlights on Cesar Chavez Avenue traffic signal and street project by APS and D P Construction.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. On Tuesday, September first, twenty twenty, council awarded the project to a lower responsible leader, D P Construction. The amount, the amount approved by council on this project was one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, eighty-six dollars, fifty cents, which in this includes a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five in contingency funds. Uh, we have a savings of a hundred, uh, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two due to a change order for the traffic signal module. As you remember, we changed the original traffic signal model to a, a different, a different model as the specs. Uh, in addition, we have a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-four on contingency funds. Uh, these funds can be used to cover the installation of the new streetlights by approving the alternate bid from D P. It was submitted with the original bid package with the amount of six, forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. Uh, this includes the streetlight boxes, trenching and conduit. And also in addition, APS investment cost is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eight cents. This includes labor and material for APS. The total amount to install this new streetlight on this project, which is going to be the D P construction cost in APS, is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and three cents. Mayor and Council, do you have any questions?
How many streetlights?
Uh, seventeen.
Seventeen. They're going to be along?
Along Cesar Chavez from Main Street to Jefferson.
Other questions? There are motion?
Motion to go up to the last one, street next to the other, having a traffic signal and streetlights by eight.
So motion by Councilwoman Garcia. Seconded by Vice Mayor Castillo, all's in favor? Yeah, both.
Thank you.
We're going to go to summary of current events.
Received today, the early warning still shows at a steady. Uh, there is a significant, there's a small increase, but not so significant. We're still at level one. Uh, met with Superintendent Mrs. Thomas Thompson and Ms. Cordory from Yuma Union High School was a great meeting. Uh, and some of the questions regarding easement for the new high school, high school location have been resolved. So that's, that's in order for the new lift station to take place. Uh, May fifteenth, we have a Pfizer vaccination for the sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. Hopefully, um, here soon, the Department of Health will let us know on the twelve-year-olds and, and upwards. So I don't know if Martha has more information on that.
Early next week.
Late next week?
They should be receiving the approval and, um, PM said that as soon as the approval is completed, usually they get their order sent.
And hopefully by our next council meeting, we'll have new cameras, new system. They will start installing Monday meeting. So we give them a week to finish the installation. And so our May eighteenth will be our first meeting with new system. Uh, Chief, De Anda.
I don't have anything. Sorry, I'm laughing at you. Anyway, no, I just wanted to mention, I was, and I mentioned in my weekly, I was really proud of a B shift under Captain Hernandez this last Tuesday. Because Regional Center had a COVID vaccination going on and they didn't expect the amount of people that showed up. They had a line from all the way around the building and down ninety-five Avenue D. It was over a mile long. And so they called us and asked if we could help. So I asked Captain Hernandez, are you already capable of going out there right now? He says, well, I'll go. I'll take all my guys. And he had six guys getting shots and they were there from about four to almost six-thirty at night. And they gave about a thousand shots. And so they did a really good job. We do have a one person still vacant from our positions that we have in the department that's caused a little bit of a rise in overtime. So we're still trying to get more people.
Community Development Director, Carmen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Carmen Juarez, Community Development. Uh, we continue working with Tishler Vice on the updated review of the development impact piece for public safety facility, water and also streets. So we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. It's a meeting with a consultant and we're reviewing the draft report before we initiate the adoption process. We're, we're moving according to schedule in this particular project. Staff also attended last week a presentation of Tyler software to learn about the system the city may acquire in the future. And also, we attended a presentation put on by Finance Department on Castell, just to ensure that we are following the process and procedures in place by the Finance Department when we are taking payments up on the second floor. I think we're doing right. I've continued working on different projects in different stages, the zoning, code text amendment for recreational marijuana, swimming pools and schools. It's scheduled to go before the planning and zoning commission on May seventeenth. We had to move it to May because we didn't have quorum at the last meeting. And we also have another rezoning presentation before the planning and zoning commission before moving it to council. Um, staff is also working on the C C N Rs for the Park View Commercial Center subdivision to record along with the plat in the next few days. And we are also working on several reviews of potential developments within the infield incentive overlay district, uh, which is also based on the developers having the ability to, uh, more flexible requirements within that area. So they're, they're moving forward and they are proposing several developments. That's all I have.
Economic Development Director, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. An update on the Cesar Chavez Avenue project. APS continues working on the intersection of Cesar Chavez and Main Street for the whole relocation. Currently, they have a subcontractor equity disturbing with underground, with a piping underground. Uh, the Summerton Avenue payment preservation, our contractor V S S International will start tomorrow with a Lurie seal application. Uh, North Summerton Avenue should be completed by tomorrow and Thursday, we'll, we'll be seeing the south side. Uh, notice to residents and businesses has been delivered. We also placed a message board and we also placed a notice to our website and social media. Uh, an update on the Fulton and Council Reconstruction Project, Semex Subcontractor Yuma Valley completed all the sewer improvements, which includes the main line, main holes and services. Uh, and the utility companies continue with their relocation. Um, the high school area and the sewer improvements project, design is already completed, as you may know. We, we are ready to advertise this project. I sent this to Yuma Del San. We're waiting for their approval. Hopefully, we can advertise this project, uh, Monday, uh, Sunday and Monday. Thank you.
Chief Juarez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple things, um, there's worrying of the three officers that happened this afternoon. Complete the fifteen positions approved by council for patrol division. Our officers are also working operation stonewalling along Highway ninety-five from mile post, about six mile post ten. And some of the levee road in support of the United States Border Patrol. So you'll see our officers in the area. We have multiple patrol vehicles that were down this week and, and our mechanics are off and they, they were on it right away. They took care of them. And we have them back on the road. We're also short three dispatchers. So for some reason, nobody showed up for testing last Friday. We're trying to figure out if we have sent out the wrong date. But, um, we're, we, we still don't know. We, we've never had something like that happen. So we're going to give it another try and we need to fill three positions in. So the same as Chief De Anda mentioned, we're, we're seeing some of that overtime happen because of the shortage that we have. Uh, we're also working closely with Judge Figaro and the courthouse to bring onboard their security officer. First time, but, um, we're helping him with a couple things. So we're excited about having somebody there that'll be extra extras and, and support when we have prisoners that are being taken to the courthouse. We are also retaking our citizens academy back this month. We're hoping we'll bring back at least twelve of the sixteen that had initially started before COVID hit. And we're hoping also to start our teen academy after school is over this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Hector Tapia.
Good evening, Mayor, and couple members. Just an update on the, uh, we're already mentioning, but we're going to have a vaccine black party this Friday. There's going to be also a celebration of the Cinco de Mayo. And we're going to have our eleven businesses that will be, uh, topping with the event. And we're going to, other economic development is going to incentivize these businesses to, uh, to provide some food and some services as well, like, uh, Hecary Place, uh, it's going to be here. And, uh, the, the, the schedule, uh, according to the, uh, the, the, the event, the vaccination is going to occur between nine, nine A M to seven P M. At the one-ten North Estadio, on the Old City Hall site, it's going to be inside. Uh, and the black party is going to start at five P M, uh, five to ten, twenty P M. I'll be manning the, uh, boots while I take it from, from the businesses. Each take it with value. Uh, they will be able to, um, to get some pieces or get some other items, uh, provided by the businesses. So I'll share with you some of this, uh, for sure after I finish here. And I also, I'm working right now, Metro PCS is looking back into Summerton to open an office. You know, used to be on the, uh, on the building across the street where the shining, the surround was supposed to be. But they moved to another location. So I got a call from Metro PCS and they're looking for a site also on Main Street. So I, I helping them to find a location. Uh, also, I'm working with another company, uh, J Y D C, sending, uh, information that a company is looking in the Summerton area, fifteen to twenty thousand per feet, uh, office building. They looking for an existing building, but that's going to be a challenge. But I'm working with them to be, even when I, I build a suit, uh, a new building, if that happens. So I'm looking for different sites right now for, to provide, uh, company, uh, the, to come to Summerton. Uh, with that, uh, the, uh, Park View Commerce Center, I'm still working with the details of some of the, uh, the sites. The, uh, one of the, uh, the proposals, they're looking for a little bigger, uh, property. And we're working, uh, with them to adjust the, uh, the size to the building, the proposing and the, the required parking for the business. So so far, um, we have, uh, three committed, uh, uh, developments. They all, they submitted the deposit, uh, part of the R S P. And I'm still waiting for the, uh, for the other, the hotel company to submit their, the R S P. It's supposed to be down very soon, so I'm still waiting for them. With that, Mayor, that's all I care. I'm going to provide to you these copies of the, uh, of the event for this Friday. And invite the community as well, uh, starts at nine, nine A M for the vaccines, for the black party starts at five P M. Some music and some, uh, and food, entertainment. Thank you.
Economic Director, Jesus.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Just a few updates on what we're, um, working on for recreation. Staff are working on getting ready promotion of tools like banners and club cards for the schools, along with other outlets like newspaper. We're, we're doing a newspaper alongside radio and possibly, uh, television. To just promote the leaks well before we get started for the summer. Also, on April twenty ninth, Y M C communicated that they're not going to be able to move forward with the lease agreement for the youth center. That's something that's going to change their operations and possibly have some financial impact. It was not, um, it was unexpected due to budget restraints for Y M C A. They will reconsider towards the fall and they did not sign the approval. We're currently seeking and looking at options. Also, for the splashlets, they're, um, operating now and the ballfields are being prepared for summer activities. Also, we submitted additional information to the community founding project with, um, Congressman. We have this office. It was requested last week. Everything was submitted on time and we are, um, we're in the mix, possibly getting some funding for the, the senior center. We requested, um, forty-eight grand. Excuse me? And they see that, oh yeah.
Economic Director, Esteban Gallegos.
Evening. Um, this week we're working on billing. We have a new, uh, accounts receivable clerk. Um, I'm very happy to announce that this accounts receivable, this, uh, new hire came from the Y pick program. So, um, we're very excited to have them, uh, have her onboard. So we're working on, on our utility billing. Hopefully, we can have our, all our bills out, um, by tomorrow. We're also, I'm working on the closing of the WIF alone. We received all the final documents yesterday. And so, um, that's going to be, um, my main focus is getting that, um, ready as well as our billing. And I believe we should be receiving that information for personnel study so that we can finalize our budget. Um, with that, thank you very much.
That concludes our staff report.
Councilmember, we have a bundle?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I just want to say, uh, thank you to Parks and Rec for putting that volleyball tournament to, together. You know, it was, it was pretty nice to be able to interact with, with staff outside of, uh, outside of council chambers. So I believe they did a really good job with it. So thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Even though Jesus didn't run our team down.
We didn't win a game.
No, I was just going to say, you know, um, you know, uh, thank you to whoever set up that, uh, that, that activity. I mean, I wasn't able to make it, but I heard that it was lots of fun. So, you know, I think that team building is, is, is great because it does provide that opportunity to kind of interact, you know, in a not so official way. So, uh, how it happened here.
Just, um, to go ahead and say what we're having with that, uh, X team Sunday this Friday. Also, we're going to be outside City Hall for registration tomorrow for May seventh, X team Sunday and as well as the May fifteenth.
Fifteenth, yeah.
Fifteenth, Saturday. Uh, that's called on a Saturday. Um, we're shooting for eight hundred. Hopefully, if, if I think it's true for talking over, I'm pretty sure we'll, we'll get that number. But, um, I know since Luis didn't turn out as, as well as he expected, but hopefully tomorrow we'll have a, a good turnout. So if anybody knows of any sixteen to eighteen-year-olds that still needs the vaccine, we'll be signing up tomorrow.
I want to thank, uh, Porte also for holding up the fort among the absence of the city manager and the Economic Development Director. We had a good meeting with a potential investor that, that, that's going to be great for the city. Also, as mentioned, the splashlets are open. Let's, let's, uh, advertise that, you know, for, for next year, let's probably keep that in mind that the, the public will know. And also good, uh, P R for, for the city.
Um, also, uh, Mr. Cabrera, if, uh...
You can, uh, call some of the fancy contractors and maybe we can have a meeting with them. Uh, been, uh, over the years, I've been hearing a lot of complaints that they don't want to come to the city. And, uh, I know, you know, we know that the city of Summerton is the only one that requires a fancy firm. So I would like to analyze that, get with them and see what their issues are. And if we think it's our resources better instead of going and expecting fences, then, then so be it. And now that we're working on the text amendment, maybe that's something we can eliminate or increase or, or change or, you know, give direction to staff of what to do with it. or, you know, give direction to staff of what to do with it. It's, uh, you know, I heard it last week, but I've been hearing it over the last two years. I want to know if it's a myth or if it's the truth that, that, that fancy contractors don't want to come to the city of Summerton. And, um, and as you said, we're the only city that has that.
Um, so we have an executive session, a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I got a motion by Councilwoman Garcia, second by Vice Mayor Castillo. House in favor?
I.
Opposed? Can I have five-minute recess?